All right, good evening. We're going to call this meeting to order Monday, November 17th at 6:00 at the City Council Chambers, I'm sorry, Third Floor, City Hall, annex. Let's raise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as
All right, thank you. We are starting our meetings now with our new mission, so I will read that off. The mission of the Sanford School Department is to prepare all students with future-ready skills and knowledge to empower success in a rapidly changing world. We do not have any adjustments, so we'll move on to approval of minutes. We've got approval of minutes for Monday, October 6th, 2025, regular meeting; Thursday, October 9th, 2025, executive session; Thursday, October 9th, another executive session; Tuesday, October 14th, 2025, executive session; Monday, October 20th, 2025, a workshop; Monday, October 20th, 2025, executive session; Monday, October 27th, 2025, executive session; and Monday, November 3rd, 2025, workshop. Do you have a recommendation?
I make a motion to approve all minutes as presented.
I second that.
All in favor? Perfect, thank you. All right, so it looks like we do have one person for public comment. Before we start public comment, I am just going to read a statement before I public comment. In order that the committee can have time to fully consider and discuss the issues, I'm setting aside, oh, we're going to skip the time period, actually. In order that we can hear from the largest amount of different voices, each speaker will be limited to three minutes for comments. For those who have not participated in our meetings before, I want to review a few rules ahead of time to ensure that the public comments process goes smoothly and there are no surprises. One, at the outset, we ask that the speakers identify themselves. Please try to be brief and try not to repeat yourself. We know discussions of school-related issues can get emotional, but please remember our children are watching, and we are neighbors, so please be civil. We will not permit profanity or shouting at one another or comments to disparage and attack individuals or groups of individuals. Speakers should direct all comments to the committee. This is an opportunity for the committee to listen to their opinions of the public that relate to the school and education matters. It is not a public debate or conversation, so no questions should be directed to the committee, and the committee will not be responding to any questions if they are asked. We want to listen. And last, the committee will not permit complaints or allegations against any staff members. These are personnel matters, which the committee is not permitted to hear in public. If there are complaints against staff, these will be handled appropriately through our complaint procedures. Thank you for your patience while I make this introduction. I have hope and confidence that your participation will be helpful and constructive to the Just to be clear, there's no public comment on Zoom? No? Okay. All right, so Elizabeth Nedo, please come up.
I'm not really sure how this works. This is my first committee meeting, and this is my daughter Natalie. She's a sophomore at Sanford High School. I also have a son that is in eighth grade. His name is Austin. And my name is Elizabeth Nedo. My husband is also here for support. I'm going to put on these really weird glasses, but they help, so... And I'm just going to read from this, so you guys don't have any back and forth. But our... We are trying to... We are here this evening to advocate for retaining the current five-block schedule. Our current five-block schedule offers content retention and continuity, especially in the skills-based subjects. Knowledge retention is essential for subjects like math, foreign language, and music. Like with sports, daily commitment and repetition are keys to success. A four-block schedule, which often involves classes every other day or only for one semester, can lead to long gaps, potentially a full year, between subsequent levels of a course and could result in forgotten material. It provides variety and balance in daily schedules. A five-block schedule offers students more variety throughout the school day, allowing them to engage with different subjects and teaching styles, which can make the day feel less overwhelming and more balanced, especially if you don't like the teachers. It also provides ease of planning for extracurriculars and activities. A consistent daily schedule can make it easier to coordinate extracurricular activities, guest speakers, and field trips, as all students are given a given class meet at the same time every day. It provides student attention span and engagement. Shorter daily classes are often better suited to the attention spans of many students, especially freshmen and sophomores. Larger blocks, 80-plus minutes, can lead to a student fatigue and disengagement if not structured with varied interactive activities, which requires significant and ongoing professional development for teachers. Studies have shown that teenagers ages 11 to 17 have an attention span that typically range from 15 to 40 minutes. Low risk of... Five-block is a low risk of falling behind. A traditional five-block schedule is less daunting on the student that misses 40 minutes of a class than if a student misses a day in a four-block schedule, which is a 90 minutes of class. This is especially problematic for students with health-related issues, family circumstances, socio-economical challenges, and logistical barriers. Let's not forget the world we are now living in, where bullying, boredom, lack of engagement, and behavioral issues are causing school aversion and disengagement. This will cause students to miss school 90 minutes at a time. A daily schedule minimizes the impact of a single absence on a specific subject's progress. There's more, but I know I'm over. So, we appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. All right. I received one email from... Sorry, I put that on my other one. From Betty Jean Charette. Thank you, Betty, for your email. Moving on to committee reports.
Sure. Special Education Advisory Committee, we have divided that advisory committee into two subcommittees. One's looking at the 18- to 22-year-old population for programming. The other one is looking for the programming of 3- to 5-year-olds, as we are tasked with taking on the CDS responsibilities of the 3- to 5-year-olds. Our last meeting was last Wednesday, November 12th. We are working on the 3- to 5-year-olds. We've had an opportunity, probably, I think, since our last school committee meeting in October. We did take a visit to Marshwood to be able to see them. They have already... They were part of Cohort 1, and so we were able to observe them, meet with them, see it in action, answer questions. We've also dug deep into looking at the logistics of looking at taking on the 3- to 5-year-olds. We have scheduled a person representative from the main Department of Education to come down and visit and be able to see our facilities and see what would be needed for us to be able to take on the 3- to 5-year-olds. We're looking strongly at joining Cohort 3. One thing that I think is important, and I'll point out right now, is to be able to fund the 3- to 5-year-olds. That is not done through the EPS 279. It's done outside of that. It also includes 100% funding in terms of what that's looking for. So Steve, tonight, in his report, will touch on that briefly, and then we will also plan to have a bigger presentation on that to the school committee in our next meeting, December 1st. We do have... Our next meeting for the 3- to 5-year-olds is December 10th. Also, Wellness Committee, Steve will provide an update on that in his report. Policy Committee, we'll see later in the agenda, the policies are in there following up the policy committee meeting we had. Our next policy committee meeting will be held next Monday, November 24th. And then Safety Committee has also met, and Steve will provide another report for that, an update on that in his report. So those are an update on the committee reports.
Okay, great, thanks. Moving on to Superintendent's Report.
Superintendent's Report will start out this evening with our student reps in the school committee, Alessandra and Zach. I don't know if there's anything that you have any updates that you want to share. You also have the latest Sanford Spotlight, also highlight, so take it away.
So, all that I want to real quick update you on is last Friday, November, I believe, 14th, the National Honor Society, who's the sponsor of the American Red Cross, hosted a blood drive. From what I've heard, it was a huge success, so if there's nothing else, I will continue. So Sanford Elementary Student Honor Veterans, Sanford Pride, Margaret Chase Smith and Carjay Lamb Elementary Schools came together in their own unique ways to express gratitude and appreciation to local veterans on Veterans Day. Down below, it's also a few links to see what they did.
Sanford High School's Performing Arts Center was filled with student athletes, families, and coaches Thursday evening, November 13th, as the school celebrated another successful fall athletic season.
Some sites around our school, at Carjay Lamb, students celebrated success this week with their Character Education Awards Program. Students were recognized as the high-five ticket winners for demonstrating the school's core values of respect, responsibility, courage, honesty, and compassion throughout the week. At Margaret Chase Smith, kindergarten pre-K students received an exciting fire safety education visit from Sanford Fire Department. At the middle school, 5th graders had a special visitor. The Brick Store Museum from Kenny Bunk came to talk to students about archaeology and some of their digs that have been done nearby. At the Pride Elementary, Sanford Pride Elementary Bus Buddy Positivity Behavior Institute program is in full swing, recognizing students who demonstrate respect, kindness, and safety during their bus rides.
Throughout the school year, local business owners, managers, and industry professionals walk through the doors of Sanford Regional Technical Center, not as customers or inspectors, but as partners in education. They sit down with instructors to our classrooms and sometimes even meet with students. They're members of SRTC's program advisory committees, and they're helping shape what students learn.
The SRTC program highlight is video production. Behind professional cameras and editing software, students in Sanford Regional Technical Centers' Video Production Program transform creative ideas into award-winning digital media, one frame at a time.
This November issue of the SMS Times takes you through Sanford Middle School's JMG Haunted Woods Event, Challenge Day, and Spirit Week. You'll also find a restaurant review, coverage of the school's Day of Welcome, sports updates, and much more.
Next slide is a link to the Sparring Times article week. The SHS Online... The Sparring Times is SHS Online Student Newspaper, featuring articles by student reporters. This article is Sanford High School's Art Trading Wall, written by Ellie.
As we approach the busy holiday season, we want to remind you of the importance of regular school attendance. We know this time of the year brings many celebrations, family gatherings, and traditions, and we also know that every day your child is in school matters for their learning.
Yes, attendance is very important, especially as we get near the holidays, so thank you in sickness season, so thank you, Alessandra, and thank you, Zach. Also, wanted to announce, we do have a community announcements feature, so if people do want to be able to have information shared out to families, that's available also through our Spotlight. Want to highlight a community announcement with the 7th Annual Spring of Trees coming up in Memorial Gym, that they'll host over 100 decorated vendors and visits with Santa in December. So wonderful way to kick off the holiday season. Also talking about the free meals that we offer, both breakfast and lunch, throughout the Sanford School Department. And then also, we have a Sanford Community Resource Guide, and especially that could be helpful as we get near the holidays, be able to connect any families to local services for that as well. And then we also have our See Something, Say Something program that's in place. Obviously, this has been very helpful if students realize that they have either themselves or some friends that they're worried about. We have the tip lines for be able to be able to help share that information, so it can be acted on. And then just the other thing that we have is some staying connected with the Sanford Schools. We have our app, download our app. You're going to want to be able to have that information available. And then you can also follow Sanford High School athletics to find out what's going on there. And then we also have abilities to watch our home games as well. So there's some ways to stay connected, also through the Sanford Spotlight. And then we always try to add the additional links in to help you stay connected to the community. We have a link there to the Sanford Springvale News, the city of Sanford's website, and Next up on the agenda is enrollment update, and so I will pass out. In our September and October meeting, I did provide enrollment updates. One thing that is really important to the Sanford School Department, as a high receiver of state subsidy, obviously, we want to make sure that we are tracking our enrollment. We're required to report that enrollment on October 1st, and so they give you the month of October to be able to check that out. So as you can be able to look at what's up on the screen, our enrollment that we certified on October 1st was 3,211 for our student count. If you look at how that compares to our October 1st enrollment for 2024 for the student account, that was a difference of 17 students less. If you look at what we submit for subsidy, we also have, in October 1st for 2025, we had 3,128 students. You compare that subsidy to our October 1st 2024 student count, that was 3,149. And so as you look at that, we have 21 students less, 21 students less from the October 1st 2024 report. And that's concerning for us. As I mentioned, we are a high receiver of subsidy. What drives the formula for subsidy? Two of the biggest drivers are your valuation for your community. Sanford's valuation continues to rise. It's the average of the last three years, and so we expect that valuation to continue. If your valuation rises, the formula believes that as a community, you then have the ability to contribute more to education. Not sure I follow that completely, but that's what the formula believes. And then the other thing that also drives that formula is your student enrollment. And when you have less students going through the formula, it's also going to be less subsidy. So if you... I want to point out that as of last Thursday, our enrollment on November 12th, our attending count is up to 3,210. So you'll notice that we have increased by six students since October 1st. Unfortunately, we can't be able to... We can't be able to count the... 3,204, I'm sorry. We can't come back to be able to count those students, because they came back after October 1st. In our subsidy count, we are up five from our October 1st certified report, 3,133. Unfortunately, we can't count those students, because they came in after October 1st. So you may be wondering, how is it that we are having less students? Well, last year, our enrollment on June 1st, 2025, was 3,226 students. If you subtract 275 seniors, that has a rollover into the 2025-2026 school year as 2,951. Since June 1st, we have 229 students transfer in to the Sanford School Department. We also had 190 new kindergarten students. So we had 275 seniors come out, 190 come in. We also had five seniors who were continuing to remain at Sanford High School. We did have 142 students transfer out. Okay? So when you do all of that math, that's what gets you to the 3,233, which is what we certified as our enrollment on October 1st, 2025. Basically, what happened is we had a very large graduating class, and we had a very small incoming kindergarten class. So when you're looking at really where that breakdown was of having 21 less subsidy students, it's really as we look at where that is. So that's unfortunate. As you can see, we still have a lot of transit. We have a lot of people who are still coming in to Sanford. We still have some who are moving and transferring out. Okay? So that is the enrollment update that was certified with the state. Any questions on that? Okay, it is November, and so I will move on to... We can expect that the weather will be changing. It already has in some respects, so I did want to quickly review our inclement weather procedures. We have information that is going to be... After tonight's meeting, this will be sent out tomorrow to our families, parents, and guardians. As it stands right now, our last day of school is scheduled for Tuesday, June 9th, so if we do not use any snow days, we will be getting at the last day of school will be on June 9th. For every day that we do lose because of weather, that will be a snow day, and that will be added on to after June 9th. Okay? So if we have to use... And we'll be doing that, is we will plan at this time to take the traditional snow days. If, for some reason, we have a really bad winter, we will not be using any storm days that take us beyond June 18th, because we have the June 10th holiday, which is on June 19th. So we will... If we are going to be able to go back past that holiday, we will then look at the idea of implementing some remote school days to be able to assist with that. All right? So I think if we look at how we've done in previous years, we should be in good shape. I don't want to jinx us, but that is what the plan is. Okay? If we do delay, cancel, or dismiss school because of weather, we want to... We will be sending information out through our website and through our app. So that's important, to make sure people's contact info is up to date, so they can stay informed, to get those messages with that. And we have the information right in there if people do need to update their information. We'll also post the delay cancellations and early release information as early as possible on TV channels, Channel 6, 8, and 13. Just so people know, typically, we are up at 4:00 a.m. talking with our Director of Facilities and Maintenance, who has boots on the ground, talking about what our facility looks like. I then reach out to the Sanford Police Department to get an update on the roads. We also contact with a meteorologist that I can speak with to be able to get the most up-to-date forecast. That usually takes place at about 4:20. And then through that, we're also in communication with our surrounding districts, and I always try to make a decision if there's going to be school canceled. Do our best to make that decision at 5:00 a.m. I usually start by sending an email to our staff at 5:00 a.m., because we do have some people traveling long distances. And so if that's the case, I always encourage our staff to read their email before they are coming back to do that. I try not to send our families a message at 5:00 a.m. We will do that a little bit later, in terms of letting our staff know, in terms of doing that, with that. Obviously, when school is canceled or students are released early due to weather, all of our school buildings will be closed for activities, and that includes our sports and practices. And that's unless there may be some extenuating circumstances, but as a general rule, they are canceled with that. There may be some exceptions, as warranted, based on the weather, since it can be unpredictable. We oftentimes might have to use some delays, because those one-hour delays or those two-hour delays allow us to open up and get our facility ready. With that, our maintenance people, our custodians are working hard to make sure that the schools are safe for people to enter, and sometimes we have to have a delay. If it's a one-hour delay, everything just gets moved back one hour. If it's a two-hour delay, everything gets back... Move back two hours with that. If we have to do a delay on a Wednesday, the early release Wednesday will still stay intact as it is. We know people have made arrangements on those early release Wednesdays. We don't want to be messing around with those. Do that. If there is going to be an early dismissal, if that becomes necessary, every attempt will be made to have that decision made and communicated by 12:00 noon with that. And as always, people may not agree with my decision to cancel or postpone school, and parents and guardians have the decision regarding their children's safety. If you feel it's too dangerous for your child to attend school, feel free to keep them home and just be sure to notify the school. So those are the procedures that we've used in the past. No major changes to those. We'll be able to be pushing this information out, as I said, this week. Any questions on that?
I'll just add a little side note. Like, I know that parents always do appreciate the call ahead of time the night before. I know that's a hard one to do, but if it's like we're getting pummeled, we appreciate it.
Yep, yep. Yep. As those of you who've been part of the Sanford School Department recently, that is not easy for me. I have a hard time canceling school when I don't see snow on the ground. But I also recognize that we trust our weather forecasts, and we also... It's important for us to stay also in line with the schools around us, because many of us have... Our staff will be having children to attend those schools, and so there is that idea of being alignment. So I have evolved over the years, and sometimes you will see a night before cancellation with that. But as always, we'll continue to monitor the weather.
And you're the hero that night.
Yes, you are, but I also can be the zero the next day, when that storm doesn't... You know, when that storm doesn't come to...
We'll support you.
Yeah. The people who will still think I'm a hero in terms of that. I'm not sure how it feels for some of our families with that. And then the last thing I want to say is, since our last school committee meeting, we did have a safety information night. Steve Rusier and myself were joined by our school resource officers, Chris Goslin at the high school, and Joe Jordan at the middle school. And those were able to update people on our safety procedures, and we were able to record that. We had that... We knew that that was probably... Might be difficult for some people to have attended. That is recorded, though it is, as you can see there, I'm wearing the same suit. I'm not in two places at once. We do have that on our website, so people can be able... And I encourage people to be able to be able to look at that, in case you missed it for it. And that's the Superintendent's Report for this evening.
All right, thank you. All right. Hello, Mr. B. Director's Report.
Good evening, everybody. The first item I have on my report tonight is pre-K partnerships. Just to bring us back briefly, currently, we have 112 students that are enrolled in our pre-K programs across the district. When we began this fall, if you remember, we had about 30 students that were still on our waitlist. This creates an inequity in our district, and so moving forward, we're looking at, how can we ensure that we have the opportunity for all of our students to enroll in pre-K if they want to enroll? One of the ways in which we have been effective in doing that is through partnerships. We are in our second year with a partnership with the YMCA, which has been very effective, not only from an outcome-based standpoint, but also from a financial standpoint. It's a win-win situation for both the school department and the YMCA. And so as we move into budget planning for fiscal year '27, I have met with... I have met with the owner and director of Kids Cove Early Learning Center here in Sanford, and we are looking to explore a potential partnership with Kids Cove, similar to one that we have with the YMCA, in which they would provide service for sixteen students. Kids Cove is a quality-three daycare facility. They've been in operation for a number of years now. They have an existing classroom that's in operation. They have staff. Jen and her staff have also been engaged with us with the first ten work we've done, and so we have really developed a great partnership with them. And the other piece of it in terms of partnerships is they provide another option for families in terms of that before and after care. That's something that our families oftentimes request, that we're not able to provide in our schools, and so that before and after care for pre-K. Also, some families, they have younger siblings, so an infant or toddler. They want to keep the students together, and so this provides another option. And so I bring this before you tonight just as an informational awareness for you. We will be looking for formal board approval at our December meeting, and at that time, I'll provide you with the numbers, the exact numbers, and what we're looking at for that. Any questions about? Okay. Moving on to the CDS transition for three-year and four-year-olds. Matt talked a lot about that in his opening report. We have had a subcommittee that's met, made up of teachers, administrators. I'd like to thank Tammy Delaney, who's also been heavily involved in leading that work with that. We have discussed what will we need for space? What will programming look like? What will the related services, OT, PT, speech, what will all of those look like? What will our transportation needs be? What will we need for furniture and supplies? In this past week, we started looking at, okay, what's that communication piece going to look like for families the first time they encounter the Sanford School Department and wanting to make a referral for students? So we have been engaged in a lot of conversation, like Matt mentioned earlier, speaking to the DOE, surrounding districts. And we're at the point where we are ready to move forward with our process. We haven't officially signed, but we're getting there. We've identified a space in our building, and like Matt said, in December, the DOE representative is going to come down and take a look at our space and tell us what we're going to need in terms of budgeting purposes for that. So that's what I have for an update for CBS. EdTech apprenticeship program. Back in August, if you remember, we talked about an apprenticeship program for our edtechs. We have five edtechs currently that are enrolled in the apprenticeship program with York County Community College. They are enrolled in an eighteen-month program that is going to move them from an edtech one to an edtech two, and they are supervised by a teacher in our district. Most, in most cases, it's a teacher they work with. And they are working on demonstrating core competencies through their work that they're doing in on a daily basis. And then they're also taking coursework. And at the end of the eighteen months, they will have the credentials they need, have demonstrated the competencies they need to earn their edtech two credential. At USM, we have seven edtechs that are currently enrolled. We've had one drop out. They are enrolled in a twenty-four-month program in order to move from an edtech three to a special education teacher certification. And so those folks, once again, they're being supervised by a teacher in district and taking university courses at the same time and working to earn their teaching credentials. So if you happen to know any of those folks or see any of those folks, either the mentees or the mentors, just say, keep up the good work. They're working hard at that. Safety committee, a couple of quick updates. We did complete our annual school safety audits. The safety audits are completed by members of the safety committee as well as the head custodians. The audits include inspecting our facilities, our security systems, and other items to identify any potential hazards to ensure a safe environment for students and staff and visitors. These audits have been compiled and have been distributed to the facilities manager and Cheryl and myself, and we're going to be looking at those as we work on what are we going to budget for in the coming year in regards to safety. So thank you to folks who have been involved in that. And then since our last update in October, when I was here last, staff, the majority of staff, have completed de-escalation training through the Crisis Prevention Institute and had follow-up training in their buildings. We do not want this to be a one-done training. We want this training to be something that we continually talk about in our buildings, and it is something staff requested. So I think the training, the module, people are pretty pleased with. I think we got some good results with that. Matt mentioned the safety video. The last thing is our wellness committee. We did meet in October. We are working on identifying what are those goals that we want to work on as a wellness committee. We have some rough goals. We're meeting again tomorrow that we're going to finalize. We're basically looking at how do we promote preventative health and wellness with our staff and students? How do we provide our staff education on insurance? Maximize our insurance, but also help us to lower our cost? And then how can we get our staff involved in wellness? We sent a survey out. We didn't get great results. We sent it out again to really ask staff what do they want from a wellness program in our district to help and support them. And so those are the updates I have this evening.
Great. Any questions for Mr. B? No?
I have a quick question. The, when's the DOE coming to look at the CDS? I know we're moving on that.
Tentative date is December tenth. When is it, December tenth, right before we have our meeting with the advisory committee, so.
Okay, yeah, I knew we were.
Yep.
Thanks. Perfect, thanks so much. All right. Moving on to new business schedule at Sanford High School beginning two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. Sorry. Mr. Nelson and the school committee had workshops held on April twenty-eighth of two thousand twenty-five and May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five to discuss the effectiveness of the five-block schedule at Sanford High. School committee then directed Superintendent Nelson on June ninth to provide information on Sanford High School moving from a five-block schedule to a four-block semester or a four-block alternating schedule for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year no later than November twenty-fifth. School committee has held a workshop on November third to review this information, and the possible options for actions for tonight include three, which would be, one, maintain the current five-block schedule for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. B, move to a four-block semester schedule beginning twenty-six, twenty-seven, or move to an alternative four-block schedule year-long beginning twenty-six, twenty-seven. So I will pass the mic over to Mr. Nelson.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, we've talked about the schedule for, I know the nine years that I've been in Sanford, it's been talked about. We've also been looking at that in terms of making changes and adjustments to that. I think all in the best interests of our students as we look through that process. There were times when we were adding a five-block, and then we made some tweaks and adjustments to make it a skinny block, and then going back and forth. One of the things that we ended up doing, because we had been able to be moving and adjusting back and forth, was we did put a schedule advisory committee together that met for well over a year. And we met to really dig into the schedule with that and really look at the different options for us to put what we felt was in the best interests of our students. At that time, we did make the recommendation to go to a five-block semester schedule. Through that, there were some classes that were going to meet on an alternating day for the entire year with that. And I, at that time, I supported that schedule. I supported that schedule, really understanding that for me, I think that was providing the best options and the most options for students. I will say, and you've heard me say this before, those of you following it around, and I will reiterate it tonight, there is no perfect schedule. There's no perfect schedule. We realized that when we've done our work digging in and looking at the places, looking at the different options and the pros and the cons to each one. And there are pros and there are cons to each one. One thing that I want to do that is important to me as the superintendent, and in some ways, it's impossible, but I don't want to place stakeholders or specialty groups against each other. Okay? Because I think you can come back to look at how that schedule impacts your particular student or you as a student or whatnot, how that impacts a staff in terms of their abilities to come back and do their jobs. And right now, the worst thing that could happen is when you make these decisions, there are going to be some impacts, and there could be some people that are going to be unhappy. As I mentioned, the five-block schedule for me was what I felt was going to provide opportunities for students. After doing that work, after investing that work, that time, the plan then was to let the schedule go and not have the continuing flip-flopping back and forth. We did the work. We were going to come back and do a five-block schedule. Well, as we were looking at that in our ongoing conversations and the relationship that we have with the SFT, it was information brought to say, hey, are we looking at this schedule? Are we looking at it? And I was resistant, because I didn't want to change back and forth. But the driving question at that time was, was it working the way that we intended? Was it working the way that we had looked at it? So as Amy mentioned, we started to look at that last spring. As we start to dig into that, we held workshops in April and May. And I think the time, the information that came out of that was it was not working the way that we intended. When we were looking at our enrollments for our classes and whatnot, we could realize that we were trying to provide opportunities for students, but the majority of our students were not taking advantage of those opportunities. And that was something I know, as I looked at it, that had me kind of look at it and say, whoa, we have to come back and do this and look at it. Rather than make a change at that time last spring, the school committee did come back for us to be able to look at, to direct, to look at a more in-depth schedule and look at it specifically through, as Amy mentioned, the five-block semester, the four-block semester, and the four-block alternating day with that. And we did have the November timeline as we looked at that. Sanford High School principal Tracy Gibson, Director of School Counseling, Beth Laterno, put a group together, committee that met ongoing as they come back to outline going in to be able to look at, studying this and being able to look at all the various pros and cons. With that, we were also, on that committee included a school community member, Lisa Blanchett. Lisa has not been here for all of our scheduling things over the years, so there are some fresh eyes to be able to come back and do that. We did hold a school committee workshop on November third to kind of release some of those findings that we looked at for the pros and the cons with that as part of that. As I mentioned, there's no perfect schedule that comes out of that. We also want to be careful that we're not pitting stakeholders against each other as we look at that. One of the things that we included through that was going to be surveys. We did survey our staff. We also sent surveys out to our current ninth graders, tenth graders, and eleventh graders. And we also sent those out to families of high school students in ninth, tenth, and eleventh graders as well. And so, you know, there's various questions, as we always come back to, that I come back to to say, what is best for our students and their preparation to prepare them for life after Sanford High School? What is best for our staff for them to be able to do their jobs and do their jobs well? What is best for our community? And anytime you start talking about this, it can be very subjective. Okay? There's usually can be motivations behind all of those different choices that comes back. We've heard public comment. We've heard that from families. We've heard from our staff in terms of looking at the reasons for that. And it's hard sometimes when you look at surveys. You want to come back and look at those surveys. But I also know, as we come back and look at the surveys, sometimes you're going to have to look at where are people coming that they answered those surveys? They oftentimes are looking at those short-sightedly in some ways, looking at it in terms of what's happening in the here and now. I know I have my own example. I have my own example back in nineteen, well, I won't say when, but when I was a senior in high school, I was trying to get early release, and my father did not approve it. He said, no, this is not going to be able to help you when you go forth. I was unhappy. I didn't talk to him for a long time. I wanted to be able to have early release. But I can tell you, after graduating from high school and moving on, I was able to come back to see the benefit of being able to come back and continue to take advantage of those. I look at my own children. My own children, in terms of what they were looking for for that as well. I know my children would have been able to come back and take what they looked upon would be the easier route, okay, in terms of for them, and would not be interested in looking at, wait a minute, what is in my best interest to be able to be prepared to go on beyond high school to come back and meet what your goals are? And that's something that can be very subjective. If you look at where our students are going, we have students, a number of students who are going directly into the world of work, going directly into careers. We have students who are going into the military. We have students who are going into post-secondary education. That could be as simple as two-year schools. It could go to be able to four-year schools. When I sit down as the superintendent and through what I look at, I look at it, and I can't, I can't say that our five-block schedule is working as the way that it was, that the way that I know that I had it as being intended. So if you look to the four blocks, okay? Things for me, that were important to me as a superintendent, if we were to look to change to a schedule of four blocks, do we have the staff that we need? Or are we going to have to add staff? We also, are we going to be able to meet the needs of our special education students? Or are we also not going to be able to do that? Are we going to have to be able to add staff? You heard the enrollment report earlier. I am concerned about anything that's going to come back to be able to add staff. The answers from the committee that studied this was, if we move to a four-block schedule, that we wouldn't have to be able to add staff and that we can also be able to work on meeting the special education needs for that. I also look at it through the lens of what is best for us to be able to prepare our kids. And there's, especially when you're looking at the four blocks, there could be the semester block. There could also be the alternating block. Where we are in the five-block now, there has to be a little bit of a hybrid, where we have some of those classes that do meet all year long. It works well for that. Okay? So they're meeting every other day. We also have the semester block where there's ideas, where there are strengths to that as well. I know for our schedule, when you start looking at making it, adding those little changes in there to have kind of a hybrid option where some people will be alternating and some people will be every day, that becomes harder. It becomes harder for us on our resources. As offering a high school, we are trying to be able to offer opportunities for our students to meet their goals. But we don't have the ability to be offering all the resources to be able to come back and do that. We have to do that within reason. And I know that when you start talking about it, it's hard. For example, when you take a foreign language in a semester block in the first semester of your freshman year, and then you don't take the second year of a language to the second year of your sophomore year. There's a gap there that's impactful. I worry about our achievement. I do. We have state assessments that come back that are offered in the spring. We have people who are taking those assessments that might not be taking any of those classes those semester. The last time they took them was a semester before. I do look at what's going on at other schools. If you look at other schools, you'll notice that the majority, practically all of them, are using a four-block schedule and they're using an alternating day schedule. You can do that because of foreign language. You can do that because of band and chorus, the music program. When you're looking at a block schedule, that helps us when it comes to Sanford Regional Technical Center. Now, am I concerned about the amount of time that is offered in a four-block schedule compared to five? You're absolutely right, I am. For us, if this change is going to be made, I'd want to make sure that the professional development is in place for us to be able to adjust our practices to be able to do that. That's going to have to be something that is going to have to be without question that we're able to come back and work on. I've also heard that there's people that come back to say, will there be opportunities for early release and late arrival? Yes, if we went to a four-block schedule, that doesn't mean that there's doing away with late arrival or early release. Will it maybe be limited to what some people are looking at now? Sure. But there will still be early release and late arrival opportunities when you get to be a senior. When you look at it, if we were going to be moving to a four-block schedule of a semester block, we wouldn't be able probably to offer study halls. If we do an alternating block schedule, I think study halls would be there. They'd have to be, so that people could be able to take a, have the study hall, because we have people who are involved, whether. have people who are involved, whether it be in having a job, it could be working in activities, it could be part of our theater, it could be part of our music program, it could be athletics, to be able to do that. I understand the balancing of alternating classes is a challenge for some students and for some staff. I do. I also know that all the majority of schools would not be offering that schedule if they also didn't think it was coming back and do. I believe strongly, passionately, in what we do and how important it is for us to be able to prepare our students. I want our kids in school. I want our kids being able to come back to be able to take those classes so that they can move whatever path they choose, whether that's career, work, or post-secondary options in military. And what are we doing best to meet the various career preparation needs of our students? As I look at this, there are some situations where, yes, we've had, by going, I believe in going to an alternating block schedule, four-block, is what's going to be able to provide the opportunities for our students. Yes, I look at some of the arguments that come back and looking at it compared to a semester block schedule. I acknowledge those arguments. Yes, there's going to be some people who would not be able to graduate a semester early. I also am concerned about those people coming back, graduating a semester early, whatever it is, them going in their options and being prepared. I do. I also now look at our math curriculum, as you look at how that is able to also allow people to be able to work through that. I've looked at numbers in terms of people who are starting in advanced math in eighth grade and the opportunities to be able to do that. But I also know we can't drive a schedule just by some of the, as I say, some of the other groups. This is impacts, but it's coming back to say, what is the best option and impact for our students? And talking with our music teachers, okay, one of the things that came up was, the music teachers had concerns about the five-block schedule. When we talked about this last spring, that was something, and you saw for us, what we were able to come back and look at was, wait a minute, it does look like more numbers in music, so it wasn't kind of computing. As I follow up with our music teachers in doing that, there's some changes that they made in terms of looking at the five-block schedule, that students would have to commit to music for the whole entire year. They couldn't be able to come back and at the semester be able to come back and change out. And so that has helped. So if you look at it from a, from their standpoint, their preference would be the alternating four-block schedule, but they also would come back and say their second option would be the five-block schedule as opposed to the four-block semester schedule in terms of looking at. And I don't want to come back to say that music has to drive the schedule. I'm coming back to look at the pros and the cons to be able to look at where we are in terms of that. So at the end of the day, I have concerns about the five-block schedule working as is intended, as one that we can support and pass a straight-faced test to all of our stakeholders. And then with that, I then look at a four-block schedule, whether it's a semester, alternating days, pros and cons to each one, I feel like there are more pros to be able to impact students on an alternating four-day schedule.
Year-long.
Year-long, yes, correct. Which also lines up with the, practically, the majority of schools that are, the schedule format that they use.
All right. So, I'm going to do my best here with Robert's rules, so just everybody bear with me, because I just want to get that out there in the open. I think it's best to probably go around the table before we're making motions and seconds and discussions, just sort of go around and just say where you're at and the reasonings, if you're comfortable doing that. So whoever would like to start.
Okay. Well, I guess that's me. So first off, I would like to just read the mission statement one more time. The mission statement of the Sanford School Department is to prepare all students with future-ready skills and knowledge to empower success in a rapidly changing world. I think that the SRTC program, which Matt did a wonderful job giving like intros to three, you know, he's worked hard on that to make that work in a five-block schedule, gives 600 more opportunities to kids to learn automotives, building trades, cosmetology, EMT, fire department, and that is, those are future-ready skills, not only in the community, but however, also in your day-to-day life, right? How to, how to build something. And we will no longer be providing that for underclassmen, so I feel if we are following our mission statement, a five-block schedule is the only schedule that provides those electives for underclassmen. Also, freshmen will only have basically one elective opportunity in a four-block schedule. If they are doing band or music or the arts, that is it. So I do feel that it's going to be a detriment to our band, music, and arts department because they're, you know, what are the chances of the electives that they're going to choose one of those? So I am worried about that enrollment. We did see an awesome increase with that in the five-block schedule. Obviously, 80 minutes is a long time to keep engagement. I believe the study says children between the ages of 11 and 17 are only engaged for 30 to 40 minutes of a class, so keeping them for twice as long, also a concern. Going to bring up the policy of my code of ethics as a school committee member. I love teachers. I just want to say that. I respect teachers, I love teachers, I love the school department, it's why I'm here. But my code of ethics states that I will at all times think of the children first and base my decision on how my decision will impact them and affect the children, their education and their training. And I believe that just the SRTC alone is a huge part of that. And then, other than that, the survey's results were pretty blatantly clear. Students and parents, not that I want to pit them against it, but it was very evident that students and parents want to keep that five-block schedule. The last thing I will say is, I believe that there's definitely a budgetary impact on a four-block schedule versus a five-block schedule. Not that we are going to increase our budget, because we do have teachers, we have retained teachers through this process, so we wouldn't have to do that. So prior to our last workshop on 11/7, we received data regarding the class sizes and quantity of classes, as long, as well as students. I took the time to go through that data, requested that we have a workshop to discuss it. I was told that it would be explained to me on 11/10 at a morning meeting. After that meeting, that data was actually then revised because it looked like some teachers only had 3.4 classes, and true enough, all had four, four classes, so just, I think it was more like the order of which we were given that. I couldn't compute the data in that case. I haven't had much a chance to review the current data. It's, it's, like I said, it's pretty close to the same, but the reason I'm questioning the financial impact is because looking at the numbers of teacher and general ed, math, English, science, and social studies, I haven't delved into the rest of it. It's my understanding if we move to a four-block schedule, every teacher will have one less class. If every teacher has one less class, and we have 11 English teachers, just as an example, that means we're cutting 11 classes in English. If each teacher has four classes, right, if each teacher has four classes, that to me sounds like there's a surplus of 2.75 English teachers in our school system. There are nine math teachers, there's 10 science teachers, nine social studies teachers, and I do not know how the math works out, but when I look at social studies, those teachers have a full boat. Their class sizes are, you know, seem to be on par. But I was like, wow, go social studies, right? Go, go history. So if 39 teachers, if we have 39 teachers, that means we're going to have 39 less classes if we move to a four-block schedule. So I, I think that we do have a budget, I mean, again, maybe we're not adding teachers, but it does seem like there's some budgetary questions here. I'm not sure if anybody else has reviewed the data that was provided last week on that, but that's where I'm at. I also don't know the total number of classes being cut altogether, how many classes will be cut. I think that I received data saying there's like 63 teachers altogether. Are we cutting 63 classes? What classes are we not providing? But it seems like less opportunities for kids for more money. So that's where I'm at with keeping the five-block. However, I also, I think until we have more data on this and the actual budgetary implications of four-block versus a five-block, I think we should make a motion to table.
Okay. I'm pumping out of my skin and I'm able to answer. All right. Thank you so much. We're going to move on to someone else who would like to, yep, we're not, it's not public comment right now, so we'll move on. Yeah, yeah. Okay. Who else would like to go?
I was part of the year and a half-long process trying to figure out if we should move from four blocks to five blocks. I think that was a tremendous amount of work that we did. We did spend a lot of time researching the different school systems, different school schedules. Many of us that are sitting here were in that process, Nick, Matt. And I do agree that the five-block is not working like we thought it would. And there were some, there are some unforeseen challenges and some unforeseen negative effects on our school climate and culture and just on our scheduling and other things that we have discussed ad nauseam, really. Not, I'm not saying that in a negative way, but I, I think we are all aware of those. I, right now, I believe based on my experience as a teacher and what I think is best, my personal opinion on, you know, as far as being in a classroom and also with my kids, I am for a four-block year-long. But I would welcome discussion for a four-block semester.
Thank you. All right. John?
Yeah. I just, first, I just want to say thank you to everybody that over the last, what, six months produced a lot of information around this stuff. We have a lot of good information, it's all, it's all public, you can read it. One of the things the information tells you is that there's no, there's no one answer that's just going to be clear, like, you know, this is what everybody wants, this is what, it's going to be great for everybody. There's, there's some folks that are going to be positively impacted, some folks are going to be negatively impacted. It, to me, it feels like the time is right to move away from the five-block. We've done that, we put good effort into it, it's, it's time to move on to the, to four blocks. In my mind, I like the four-block one semester. I feel like the, it's, it's more conservative, but I think for this transition from the five blocks, this is where we should be going. Having said that, I'm very concerned about some programs, band and music and things like that, but, but I think that's where I'm landing, no, that is where I'm landing right now.
Thank you. Lisa?
So a lot of work has been put in, just like there was a lot of work that was put in when they went into the five-block schedule. But again, no perfect schedule exists. The five-block did not work as it was intended. It is time to make this change. It is not going to be an easy process. It is going to be a painful process, but it is the time to make that happen. Whether we go with the year-long or the alternating block, I think that there are things that will have to be some sort of a hybrid. There are things that just lend itself to being semester rather than year-long. I mean, there are things that, there are no way that it's going to be year-long, like the health, the PE, that kind of thing. So in, in some ways, there has to be some sort of hybrid. I'm not sure if everything has to be alternating block. Maybe there are some things that are year-long, and I would defer that to the counseling department. I don't know that we have to make those decisions right now, but that the decision that it needs to be a four-block schedule is something that we have to decide now. The climate and culture is important. That is something that is being eroded by the five-block schedule, and that is something that we have to look at, and that is one of the key reasons that we have to change from five-block to four-block. That is something that we've talked a lot about and a lot of what the scheduling committee talked about. It was not an easy decision, it was not an easy conversation. The teachers do have the students' best interests at heart, and a lot of the conversation was about that climate and culture, not just the schedule. It is, there was a lot that went into this conversation, and this is the time that this has to make, this change has to be made.
Can I just ask you a clarifying question? So when you say hybrid, are you meaning year-round?
Whether, yes, I'm, sorry, hybrid, not just everything has to be year-round, the four-block year-round versus four-block alternating schedule. I think that there is room for there to be both year-round, some classes be year-round and some be alternating.
Semester. Okay.
Is, sorry, looking at Matt here, is the only way that happens with a year, like, right, because the alternating day, it has to be the alternating days in order for that, so it has to be the year-long in order for a hybrid-type thing to happen?
I don't, no, I don't think so. I think that would just have to be clarified in the motion of what you're able to come back and whatever the.
I don't understand what that means, I guess.
So for instance, English classes and AP class, or, excuse me, English classes could be year-long, but something like band can be alternating?
No band, okay.
Typically with our advanced placement classes, we have made the change to have those be year-long because the AP exam happens in the spring, and so you usually have them meeting every other day, for example. So if there was a semester-block schedule, there's one of those classes that I think would have to be the hybrid option that Lisa was talking about.
And you could do that with either an alternating schedule with eight classes, or you could do that with the non-alternating schedule? That's what I'm asking. Can you do it either way, or is it, has to be one or the other? That's what I'm asking.
Probably look to Beth LaTerno or a scheduling person before I back myself into a corner that I can't, that I can't.
So I actually would like to make a motion to table the four-to-five-block schedule.
I hear you. So it's my turn now to do what I would.
Oh, yes, good, yeah.
Everybody had a turn, okay? So, she is, yeah. So I'll just, so my turn. So, yeah, I feel like Paul and I have been on this school committee for five years. This has been talked ad nauseam, literally. I would agree, and I, there's people, there's a lot of people, I think, that don't know how much work that has been involved. You were thoroughly in it. I feel like I was thoroughly in it, but I wasn't in meetings. And then you were recently in it. And I think everybody that is here and is watching can really understand that you can have, feel this way today, and tomorrow you're going to feel this way, because I have definitely been on the Sanford High School seesaw for five years. So, you know, I agree that, I'll just, so for me, I'm a four-block semester, but can definitely get on board with the four-block semester hybrid for the band and AP classes, just I think that that makes sense from what I've been hearing in the past. But, you know, I came in with a semester in mind today. Really, I have a hard time, my reasonings are really because the seven and eight classes for, you know, 50% of our students go to college and 50% go do not. And so, you know, and I've got all the different learners in my house, and so there are going to be benefits to some and then not, and like, we're all just saying the same things tonight. I just think that for, for, you know, the 50% that may struggle, may not struggle, and for whatever reason they choose to, you know, make a different path, I think that for many, the seven or eight classes, year- I think that for many, the seven or eight classes, year-long, so let's just say eight classes because it'd be a four-block, and you know, let's just say assuming that they're taking a, a study hall, just assume, so we'll say seven classes, that is a lot for many learners. And so that is one thing I'm just having, I, I really just can't get past, to be honest with you. And I would also say the climate and culture, the survey, you know, we can't dismiss 90% of the staff, you know, when they have voice. And so, you know, I would also say that the alternating, that was, of all the stakeholders, that was the least on all the surveys. So I feel like compromise is, is a four-block semester, but I would say the, the alternating before the band and the, and the EP classes. So that's where I stand. What we plan on doing tonight, and I hear you, but what we plan on doing right now, what we had discussed before we sat down, was that we would first go to the recommendation that Mr. Nelson put out. We will do a, you know, a, make a recommendation, a second, we can have discussion, we can vote on that. If that does not pass, then we can move on to your motion, okay? All right. So would anyone like to make a motion for Mr. Nelson's recommendation? Okay, I'll make a motion for Mr. Nelson's recommendation for the schedule for the Sanford High School beginning 2026, 2027 school year. And I'm making this motion just for discussion. Let me just put that out there. So it would have been best for you to make the motion, but would you like to do it?
To make a motion for discussion?
For the four-block year-long beginning, because that is where you are right now.
We need a vote, we need a second, we need a motion, we need a second, then we have discussion.
And then a discussion, yes. Yes, for the discussion.
I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion that we move to an alternative four-block schedule, year-long, beginning in 2026, 2027.
Okay, second?
I second that.
Okay. And then let's have discussion.
So I really, I mean, is it possible to, to have that hybrid? You know, because can we, can we, I guess that's a question, and maybe we should have, should have asked this a long time ago, you know, for, especially like our band and chorus, our AP teachers that were here that made a really good point. Is that, is that a possibility to do the hybrids situation? Is that too confusing? Is it too chaotic? I guess that's a great question.
I make a motion to table the four-to-five-block decision until we have an answer to the hybrid, whatever that means, and more information about the budget impact.
So we can't make another motion while we're currently in a motion?
You can make a motion at any time to table. Yep. You don't.
While we're in a motion? So I'm not aware of that, but I don't lend to say that I'm 100% on Robert's rules when it gets like this. So let's have.
There's a motion on the table now that's been set, that needs action.
Right.
Either it has to be, it needs to be voted on.
Okay, I make an amendment to the current motion to table.
Someone who made the motion asked to.
I also tried to make a motion before we got into this motion, but I was shut down.
Okay, can I just say something for a moment? I think it's pretty clear that, Melissa, you want the five blocks. And I understand that. I understand that you want the five blocks. But the purpose of Amy asking everybody individually what we wanted was to see if there was anybody else that wanted to continue with the five blocks. And there isn't.
Right, but we no longer have, we now have a hybrid that is not, that we, so we no longer have a clarity on what hybrid is or what, what block are we moving to at this point.
But we haven't even decided whether a hybrid is something that we want to research or find out more information about or anything.
I'm just motioning to table based off of John's comment on what is a hybrid.
So we're currently in discussion. So let's, like, so I heard your discussion, okay? Is there any other discussion regarding the motion that we are currently in, which is for year, year-long?
Is this where I would speak about why I think the four-block?
Sure.
Year-long? Okay. So some of the concerns that I have with the four-block semester have to do with the gaps in learning. And that's for, I think that affects everybody across the board. So that's a concern that I have. Like, if you have Spanish your freshman year, I mean, if you have Spanish like your sophomore fall semester and then you don't have it again till your junior year, or if you don't have math, that's a very difficult gap. And I think for me, the idea, you know, the opposite would be to have a year-long class. And yes, the argument against that is that teachers might not want to be, I, I can't think of a diplomatic way of saying it, so I'm just saying it, and everybody's going to know that, we've all talked about this, that maybe teachers or students are having a difficulty with their relationships, so they would want a fresh start in the new semester. I'm of the opinion, and my experience was, and a lot of the research shows also, tell me if, you know, I'm not speaking correctly, Beth, that having a year-long class allows the teacher and student to work through those issues and also address any learning gaps. So in the end, you would have less need to take a class again because you're working through those issues, not only academically, but I also think that there are a lot of skills that are learned by having to deal with those issues, whether it's academic or, you know, a communication issue or whatever's going on between the teacher and the student. I also feel that it will strengthen community, not only in the classroom, but overall as a student body. It gives students more time to get to know their fellow students, get to know their teachers, et cetera. I am also concerned about the numbers for the music and the arts being affected even more with just a four-block semester, school year, than a four-block every other day. I also think that it's good to have study hall, so that can't happen with a semester block. I also agree with Mr. Nelson when he says that there are other, most of the other schools around us and pretty much in southern Maine are all working under the four-block every other day schedule, which if there is that many schools that are doing it, something about it's got to be working well. And I'll leave it at that for right now, in case anybody wants to counter.
Yeah, those are all, those are all great points, absolutely. Like, I, I, I don't think that, I can't disagree with you on those. And I think that in some cases that does, those are entirely accurate, right? Question is, does it, does this apply to our whole student body, right? And if there's a way, you know, and if there's a way to, to appease, you know, appease more people with, with that, that hybrid model, and I don't know that it can be done, but then could we, could we capture some of those? Because I'm very concerned about band and chorus, right? That's one of the best things coming out of this community, right? And we really need to, you know, we should be nurturing that and looking for opportunities to do it. So I'm very concerned about that as well, yeah.
Beth's at home on Zoom and her, her internet keeps kicking her off, so.
Hi, I'm here.
Oh, there she is, okay. So I will just share this, she said no matter, so as far as the hybrid, when you guys are talking about a hybrid, if it's going to work, if you think about it now, we currently already do have a hybrid. We have five blocks for a semester-long, but we have AP classes that go every other day all year. We have band and chorus that go every other day all year. We have gym and health classes that go every other day. So that's what a hybrid is, and we're already doing it. So she said no matter what we do, four-block semester or four-block every other day, there are going to be some of those oddity classes. That, that is the nature of the schedule. Is there anything else you wanted to add, Beth?
Yeah, I would just add, hi, everybody. I would just add that whether we do a four-block daily, a four-block every other day, or a five-block, there are going to be oddity classes. And when I say that, I mean those every other day classes. So if we were going to go to four-block every other day for the year, obviously we'll have every other day once, but if we did four-block semester, my recommendation is that we would need to continue with APs every other day, chorus and band every other day, obviously gym and health, and then a couple of every other day electives. And why I say a couple is that I can't give an exact number quite yet, and the reason is I don't know. And I don't know until we do master scheduling every year. So an example is, kids need one full PE to graduate. They get it by doing two halves. And they need one health, but for half a credit to graduate. Just in that creates a need for us to have an opposite class to fill, if that makes sense? Are the people with me? Okay. So just in doing that, we have to have. And so right now at the high school, we have several of those every other day electives that kids will need to fill. And it may be to fill opposite an AP class, it may be to fill opposite a gym class, or opposite a chorus class, if that makes sense.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other questions for her on the Zoom?
No.
Nope, okay.
Does that help explain a hybrid more?
It does for me.
Yeah, it sounds like it, yeah, it does sound like it actually makes more sense with the four-block year-long. I do like the, what Paula was saying too about working through, you know what I mean? Like, being with the teacher, building that relationship. Sometimes it's like you're not giving it a chance, or, you know, oh, they'll be done in, you know, I'm done with this class in a few weeks, right? And then, so they don't ever have to, they don't ever build that, you know, that relationship and, and continue the education through the whole year with the gaps, like you were saying as well. I just want to say I like what, I like the point you were making about that, yeah.
Thank you. I do, if I can say something, because I, I know, Amy, you've talked a lot about, or we've all talked a lot about, the, the student population that would have a very, I think everybody would be challenged with an every-other-day schedule. But there's a certain percentage of our population that would be very, much more impacted by those challenges. And I'm wondering, are there things that we could put in place? Like, what sort of flexible options do we have for that group of students? Like, is there something where, I don't know, they could, could we schedule extra help or something during that time? Not necessarily a study hall, but something that's more, I don't know, where they get more help or something? Because one of my concerns is that having a four-block semester schedule is too limiting for everybody, and so that, that we're going to end up with the same situation that we have with the five-block where we're bottlenecked with our schedule. There's not enough room for anything. But I don't know if, I mean, am I speaking, does that sound crazy or unrealistic? Versus the four-block every other day, where I feel like because you have eight, eight classes, you have more flexibility to pick and choose and add throughout the four years? And, oh, sorry.
So to address that, my understanding is with a four-block schedule that Spartan Time would at this moment be continuing. So you have an opportunity there. I also look at when you move to a four-block schedule and that increased time, I would expect professional development to take place to help people be able to work in that time. I wouldn't want it just to say, I'm just going to continue to teach a 50-block class, 50 minutes and the other 30 minutes are just going to be a study hall. We're not looking at that, but I could see how staff and teachers would work some of that time into helping people be able to stay connected to be able to do that. I think there's, to me, I think there's opportunity there to be able to help people come back to stay, to help them stay connected to be able to do that. Is it, is it as good as if it was a semester-block piece with that? I'm not sure of the answer to that, but I also think that, I don't think anyone is looking at people, throwing people into that option without realizing some of the pitfalls to it or, or cons to it, and how they could be able to try to do our best to address that in some ways with it. That's probably the best I would try to address that.
And so, sorry, and even with the every-other-day year-long, there would still be, like Beth was saying, there'd be, like, they'd still have half-year some classes, right? It's not like you're going to be in the same four classes all year-long. There's still an, there's still going to be a switch at the semester break for some classes. Because she said like health, we'll have another class, that's what she was just saying, right? So even in that schedule, there'll still be some opportunity of getting more variety or more in the.
So what I just heard, and correct me if I'm wrong, what I just heard Beth Luterno just say was that those were questions that we were saying, is it possible to do the semester, four-block semester with a hybrid? And that was what she was referring to. So the four-block semester would be, we would, with the, with the semester. We would still have to have a hybrid with AP, chorus, band, gym, and a couple of electives. That is with a hybrid, not with a year-long.
Right, but she was also saying with the year-long, you'll still have to have half classes halfway through the year, you'll still be switching. So I guess it's kind of hybrid either way.
I think, is it ready to get Beth to, because that's a pretty good question, because I'm not sure of at least the.
Because she said half-year is health, so you have to fill in the other half of the year.
I heard that too. So that, that would be something that I, I think that's a good question to be able to ask. I, I think there probably wouldn't be a lot of that available in that hybrid schedule, but that's just my assumption.
Should tell her to go to her neighbors with better internet. I'm back. There we are.
So one of the things, Beth, we heard you say as you were talking about the, some of the classes that would have to be alternating, you mentioned that I think it was health that might be alternating, but rather than be alternating year-long, it was alternating maybe for a semester? Is that, did we understand that right?
Correct, as well as PE. So kids choose at minimum two PE electives, they both run every other day for a semester.
Okay, and so, Melissa, is there specific questions you had about that? And like, will there be more opportunities or in terms of that?
Yeah, just I guess in the year-long alternating days in that, in that schedule, like, there'll be classes that are only one credit and halfway through the year, they're going to switch, not just health and PE, but there will be electives, right, that are half-year-long. It mean, it puts math all year, English for freshmen, because they, they need the full two credits all year, but then the other things will still switch at the semester?
Nope. So if we are looking at an every-other-day-for-the-year schedule, okay? And I want to really be clear when it comes to scheduling, the more oddities you put in, the worse the schedule comes out, okay? Trust and believe this, please, as someone who has done scheduling for, at this point, decades. And so, right now, for example, psychology is one credit, okay? That means it meets every day for one semester. If we go to an every-other-day semester, excuse me, an every-other-day-for-the-year schedule, psychology will be every other day for the year. Okay? Because what we cannot do is start picking and choosing all of our one semester, one-credit classes, and saying, well, that's now going to, we're now going to make that a half a credit, and this is one credit, and that's a half a credit. That would create, frankly, a scheduling nightmare. And we want to do what's best for kids. I know there's a lot of concern with students who have made four-year plans, that we want to make sure they can get in what they want to get in. And so if a class is one credit, for the most part, there's always going to be funky situations. If we go to every other day for the year, it is going to run every other day for the year. If it is a gym, it will run every other day for a semester, a health, every other day for a semester. If we do a semester block, which is every day till January, and then four new classes January to June, kids will have, like, psychology every day for one semester, but still the option of the APs will have to run every other day, the gyms and the health will have to run every other day, and a couple of electives that, in our history, history, we have had run every other day, to use, frankly, as, I don't want to say filler, but filler to work opposite the every other day classes.
To help the schedule work.
Correct.
Okay, so we are currently in a motion right now for year-long four-block schedule. We had a, we have a motion, we have a second, we are in discussion. Are we ready to make a vote?
I just want one more clarification while Beth is still listening. Looking at the four-block semester schedule, then, we're not talking alternate, we're talking four-block semester schedule, but then there would be some additional oddities that would be every other, like music, art, health, PE.
Not necessarily art.
Not necessarily, I'm sorry, not art, music, I'm sorry, not art.
And not, and just specific music, so band and chorus.
Band and chorus, health and PE would be those oddities that would be alternating, correct?
Correct, and we might have, it's similar to what we're doing now with the five-block.
Okay.
And then we would have, I'm just, sorry, thinking, like, we have a history class that is like, for lack of, I don't have the name in front of me, but let's just call it Intro to History, that's every other day for a semester, right? So we are going to have a couple of those, that no matter what schedule we have, we're going to have to do as filler.
Right.
That's part of creating a...
And AP classes.
APs would be every other day for the year, correct?
Even, even if we are not on an every other day schedule? If we have a four-block semester schedule, AP would be...
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
As well as band and chorus.
Mm-hmm, band and chorus, thank you.
But not necessarily like Intro to Songwriting, which is an elective within that department. Does that make...
Yep, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so we're back, we are still in discussion. I would like to put this to a vote right now. So John, you made the original motion. We are currently in the motion of the four-block year-long. So would you like to make any adjustments to your motion?
I think you just vote? You just...
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
He can make adjustments to his motion after the discussion, so I'm asking if you'd like to make adjustments...
Okay, let's...
...to C, which was Mr. Nelson's recommendation.
Yeah, that's Mr. Nelson's recommendation, I think.
We're good, okay, ready to vote?
Right, and then...
Okay. Who is in favor to move to an alternate, alternative, I'm sorry, alternate, four-block schedule year-long, beginning 26, 27? In favor, please raise your hand. Year-long, Paula, okay. That's what we're in right now, four-block year-long.
The four-block alternating schedule is...
Yeah, C.
So there's four-block semester, four-block alternating, and five-block. So the four-block alternating is year-long.
Okay, so opposed to the motion? So what are you, Lisa? I'm opposed. Okay.
B is...
Yep, so we're not in that, we're not in that motion right now. Right now, we are in the motion of C.
Yeah, but she's trying to figure out which is...
Okay, so after this motion, if this motion gets denied, then I can make a motion...
I'm making a motion to table this discussion.
Okay, so I will allow you to table that. We can take that to the next motion, and then we will then go to another motion if that does not pass.
I'm positive I can do that now, but...
Can you put your thing on, though?
Sorry. So in both four-block options, you still have a few classes that are year-round. So there's one four-block option, that is, four classes that are the same classes for fall semester, and then you get a whole other different four classes for spring semester. That's the four-block semester. Then the four-block year-long is a schedule where you have classes all year, you don't switch halfway through the year, and what you have is four classes on the red day, four classes on the white day.
And that is the motion that's on, is every class would be an alternating four-block for the entire year?
Yep.
But it won't be every class, I just want to be clear.
Yes.
Okay. So, so right now, we are in, I asked who was in favor, Paula's in favor, who is opposed to the year-long four-block schedule? That is me, and then it's John. Okay, so are you abstaining?
Yes.
Okay, and are you abstaining? Okay, all right, so this motion does not pass, we are moving on. Melissa, would you like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion to table this discussion until we have more information on the clarifications between, the differences between these schedules.
Would anyone like to second her motion? Okay, so there's no second to your motion, so the motion dies, okay? So now, I will make a motion to move to a four-block semester schedule beginning 26, 27. Is there any discussion upon the motion that is on? No? Okay. Oh, yep, okay, you second it, thank you, I'm sorry.
And...
Now we're in discussion.
About the four-block semester.
Four-block semester, which will, with the four-block semester, that will include the oddities of AP will still be year-long, chorus and band will be year-long, are alternating, and gym and health, and a couple of it electives. So if there's no discussion, I will sustain from this as well. Okay.
So it's moved to a four-block semester, but it does include the oddities of the every other day that has been part of previous discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
So all in favor, or those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, so Lisa, John, Amy, opposed, Paula. And you, Melissa is abstaining.
I'm opposed to that, too.
You're opposed?
Yeah, I'm opposed.
Okay, okay. So the motion has passed. The Sanford High School schedule, beginning class of 2026, 27, will be moving to a four-block semester schedule with the alternating schedule of AP, chorus, band, gym, and health. All right, are we ready to move on with this agenda? I know I am. All right.
Next up is long-term substitute rates for EdTech 3. So Cheryl, if you want to come back and handle this, if we can have the attachment up for that, thank you, Sarah.
Good evening. Hold on. So, long-term subrates, so we determined that we didn't have any long-term subrates for EdTech 3, like we do for teachers in our long-term subrates. So we decided to add that and have the same methodology that we use for the teacher rates. And so we are asking to add our long-term subrates for EdTech 3, because EdTech 3s are able to be in a teacher, in a room without a teacher involved, or without the teacher in the room, so we felt that they should be treated similar to a teacher's rate, but based off an EdTech 3 rate. So as you can see, they would have been paid $120, and that brings it up to $124.37 for no active certificate, and then if they have the active certificate, it would be, instead of 120, they would get 138.19. So that is what we're asking for approval.
I make a motion to approve the long-term substitute rate for EdTech 3s as presented.
I second that? All in favor? Perfect, thank you, Cheryl. Yes, sorry, moving on to natural gas, California, what do you got for us?
So we had a, we had a workshop on this a couple of weeks ago, and so I wanted to bring this forward to you. We got a bid for natural gas. We currently have been on the standard rate at our high school in our Sanford Pride Elementary School, which is, and we currently spend about $300,000 for our natural gas. About 52% to 60% of that cost is for the actual natural gas supply. The remaining part of it is for the delivery charge, so the delivery charge would not change, this is only for the supply charge. We've been paying approximately 79, just around 79 cents per thermal, whatever that long name is. And we're, and 88% of our consumption is between the months of November and April. So we got three bids from two companies. The bids went from anywhere from 12 months to 60 months, and the prices ranged from 66, from 66 cents, I would say 66.7, or $1.15 and 55. And we would like to go with NRG to provide our supply with a 60-month rate, which essentially would take us for a five-year, keeping us at a flat rate from where we have been on average for the past three years, and have us for another five years, which I think is a good deal for us.
Any questions for Cheryl regarding this?
No, thanks for looking at that, getting, digging into that and getting those bids, because everything takes time. But I'd like to approve the NRG natural gas bid for 60 months of 0.731 cents.
Yeah, I'll second that, and also say fantastic job getting that, and, you know, that's going to be a big...
Yeah.
Yeah, great job.
Savings. All in favor? Perfect, thank you, Cheryl. All right, now we are moving on to FY 2027 Harvard Pilgrim Health Insurance Renewal.
So last Monday, we had a workshop, a school committee workshop, that was focused on the Harvard Pilgrim renewal for that, and so we had representatives from Acadia Benefits came in. Acadia Benefits have been the people who've been working with us for, geez, a number of years, over 10 years, in terms of how we are looking at the various renewals in health insurance. And so as we did that, we had a workshop to come back, because the central question that we're looking at is, should we be going out to bid? Because if so, the timeline to be able to do that, to align with our budget process, really, decision has to be made very soon. So Acadia Benefits came and gave us a very in-depth presentation going past our history in terms of looking at health insurance, and then also coming back as they were looking at the planning. And they presented us with three different options. The first one would be a capabilities-only RFP process. The advantages to that were, it would not jeopardize a no-market bid offer from Harvard Pilgrim, and it provides the information on the capabilities of the other carriers beyond just pricing with that. And so there are disadvantages to do a proper study, Harvard Pilgrim would be included, and so if that was the case, they might, that might jeopardize the no-market bid, since we'd end up asking for a no-market bid, Harvard Pilgrim would know the other carriers' capabilities didn't necessarily compare as favorably. Remember, last year, we did do a mini capability study for last year's renewal with that, and part of that, one of the biggest challenges we have is the retiree billing, since that is something that limits the other carriers. So that's the first option, would be a capabilities-only RFP process. The second option would be to proceed with a capabilities-only RFP, followed by an RFP for rates from the selected carriers. And so if we do this, the advantage to that is, it would demonstrate that we have truly evaluated all the options for fully insured health insurance. There are downsides to that. It would remove the no-market bid option from Harvard Pilgrim. The need for our retiree billing, as I mentioned, that reduces opportunity possibly to find a more competitive alternative to Harvard Pilgrim, because they can handle that. If we do have an outside organization, for example, Maine School Management Association administrated the billing, there'll be an additional cost to that, that we'd have to cover by the school department. And the last time that we did go out to bid, market was back in 2017, and we did that, we really only had one company at that time provide a competitive option. The third option would be to wait for Harvard Pilgrim renewal and decide at that time whether to market the plans. So if we do that, that preserves the no-market bid option, but there are some disadvantages to that, that would provide less time to evaluate the other carriers, especially the capabilities. We'd also have some of the same disadvantages that option two would have. It would, as we mentioned, it would remove the no-market bid, but also the need for retiree billing would still be there for that. And then, you know, right now, we don't have anything about deadlines or timelines that we're aware of that we have to go out to bid or market. I know when we had our leadership team meeting last week, Amy, Melissa, and I, this was one of the items that we brought up for discussion, in terms of, you know, trying to check to see if we did have to, the rule to go out to bid. So information that we had there wasn't with that for us, it's just trying to be able to navigate a really challenging situation when it comes to health insurance, and also the impact of health insurance on a budget, and also the ability that, in the current climate, we're also looking to try to save our money, but we also recognize that there's risk involved with that, where it could actually not. So Cheryl, anything you'd like to add to that overview of where we're at in the three options?
No, other than the, the other concern of mine is that the retirees and the billing of retirees, that part concerns me, too. Because currently, we don't have to do anything for that. If that gets brought back on our plate, that's something I, that is concerning, so...
Because not every other carrier out there has that ability to do that, so...
So then we become a collection agency.
Well, and if we don't, if they don't offer it, I know Shelley was mentioning that we would then have another bill to MSMA, or, you know, there's...
would then have another bill to MSMA or, you know, there's like, in order for us to get somebody to take care of that billing, it's an additional cost to do that, so.
Correct.
Yes, correct.
I mean, just for discussion right now, without putting a motion out there, I, you know, that, we, thank you for all your work and Matt's work. This is like, more than you ever, people who are, the millions that are watching right now have no idea how much thought that goes into the insurance and how much of a cost it is. And so, we really do, we're thinking about this a lot and just what is the best decision? And I think, much like the schedule, I think it's something we could go back and forth about too because there's pluses and minuses about waiting for the renewal or proceeding, you know, and so, there's pluses and minuses. I just look at our loss ratio this past, you know, year, and I, I'm usually one that is all right with like, you know, taking a chance a little bit in my regular life and, but I, right now, I'm not with this budget. So, I would personally, where I say I'd like to wait and wait for the renewal from Harvard Pilgrim. So, that's just my own personal take. I don't know what everybody else, yep?
Oh, I was just, I think it's motion then discussion. So, I'm going to make a motion to wait for the Harvard Pilgrim renewal and decide at that time whether to market the plans. So, get numbers from them first, I guess is what it says.
So, you're making the motion?
Yep, to wait for Harvard Pilgrim renewal and decide at that time whether to market the plans, yeah.
All right, I'll second that then. And now, we're in discussion. I apologize. I'm like this right now, my head.
I would just add, just a reminder that we push Harvard Pilgrim to give us that renewal. And the earliest they can give us that, usually Cheryl, is sometime in February.
Yeah.
Oh, even with the.
They were, the first one they gave us was, yeah, February at the earliest, the first one. And then the no-market bid happens and then.
Yeah. So, so I, we would like to, as much as we would like to start that tomorrow, it really doesn't line up with that timeline. Doesn't mean that we still can't, after we receive that, go out to bid. But boy, that makes it really difficult in a budgeting process because, remember, we try to approve a budget from the school committee side by the end of February. We go to the budget for the city council through the month of March so that they can approve it in April. So, that, as we wait for that, the timeline is not our timeline, it's more about Harvard Pilgrims. And that's not, that, they've been consistent with that throughout.
And we, there's no getting that, there's not really any way to get that sooner because...
We will continue to try and push, but.
It just doesn't happen.
I'm not sure, I would expect that that would still remain into 2026 and still looking at, most likely, February, most likely.
Yeah, because they really want to wait until after November, which is, the November claims, which is really two months after November.
Oh, right, right. The claim, okay. That makes, that's, that reasoning makes more sense, okay? And then, they look back, I'm sorry, remind me, they look back two.
Two years.
Two years, right, of our claims. And I, like, they've not been great for the past few, I would like to add.
Yes, we have, we have not been trending, we have not been trending the way we'd like.
I think any of the, you know, I, I'm, you know, I'm more than willing to take a risk to try to, especially because this is a volatile, this can sink a budget, detract from a budget, and it comes at a terrible time, too. Like, we get the number, right, when we're finishing up the budget, and then it's like, oh, we have another 500,000 to account for or something like that. But Acadia, they also were like, you're not, they didn't feel like we were going to go get substantially better going out to bid. And that, I'm paraphrasing, but that's, that's in our workshop. And they also were kind of like, you might, you might just kind of poke the bear a little bit, too. And, you know, you know, insurance is vital to people's lives, but it's really got a stranglehold on not only our budget, but a lot of people, like the nationwide budget. I just want to say that this, this health insurance issue is no joke, yeah.
All right, are we ready to vote?
All right, no, one more question. If we go out to bid, we don't get those numbers back probably until the February-ish time either. However, if we get the Harvard Pilgrim number back and we don't like it, we go out to bid and we get those numbers even later.
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, well, this is fun.
Yeah.
Yeah, the timeline is if we made a decision tonight to go out to bid, remember, it's around the holidays and Acadia Benefits pointed that out, that you're talking about selecting a carrier in probably early April, which is pushing it up against, you know, the timeline that we have established for our budget development.
Now, with that said, next year, if we have better numbers, I think that we could start asking these questions maybe even in September so that we have more kind of time to sort of ask for packets to go out and requests to go out. Am I wrong on that?
No, you really can't go out earlier than we're proposing here because they won't quote more than a few months before your.
Due.
Due for a renewal. That's where you kind of have a problem. So, we, we have this, only have a short window where they'll give you a quote. And so, that's where we are. And then you only have the short window, they can make a decision to go for a quote and hope for the best that your claims come in good during that time period. Because, and we haven't had the greatest in-between the last two years. So, you really want them to come in phenomenal, in a way, to make up for some of those bad ones.
But we'll be able to.
It's, we, we're not.
I'm hearing you.
I'm on.
We're good.
I'm on the fence.
Sure.
And I really am on the fence. I feel like we should do it in a lot of ways, but I look at our claims and I worry. I just, I did healthcare for a long time. I, and I worry because I don't know what I don't know that's going to happen between now and when we go out to quote. And that worries me. Because if we do great, awesome. If we don't. Right. And if we had had some really great months in a couple of years, that would be a different story. But that's where my worry is.
Thank you. So, we're currently in a motion. Are we still good with discussion or can we go ahead and vote? I'm ready to vote. Anybody ready? Okay, all right. All in favor to wait for the Harvard Pilgrim renewal and decide at that time whether to market the bills? We did.
Melissa and Amy.
And then me. Yep. So, all in favor? Okay, unanimous, perfect. Thank you, Cheryl. Oh, you're still here.
I'm still here.
All right, September 2025 financials. Thanks for being here.
It was the Cheryl Show today, I guess. So, here we go. So, so in September, you're going to see, it actually is kind of odd, you're going to see we're actually below budget or over budget. And that's, I can explain that right away. You're going to see, actually, you're going to see it, it's because of debt. Because last year, we, the city paid two of our debt payments for us, and then we paid them back for them. So, it didn't show up in our financials. So, that's why. And so, as you'll see, we'll show that in a couple of pages, that's why it looks like we're over budget. So, I'm going to tell you nothing to worry about. So, we're half a million, or about $400,000 over budget. And so, that's why we are over budget. And we're about $700,000 over last year when it comes to revenue. So, when we look at federal grants, we're about $321,000 of revenue and about $292,000 of expense. And so, we're looking good there. We've been doing great, but great at billing. And enterprise fund, we've been $140,000 worth of revenue and $451,000 worth of expense. And that's because the federal government was closed. We did not get their payment for one of their, for the school nutrition payment. So, that was on hold. We should be getting those, start seeing those payments come in soon. So, that's good. And then other grants, we are $274,000 worth of revenue and $74,000 worth of expense. Most of that's MLTI because we get the money ahead and then we pay that money out after. And then, so next page. So, when we look at Article One, we are right there on budget. We're at $6,000 below budget. So, I don't think we could get any closer. We're running about $140,000 more than last year. Same thing with Article Two, we're running right at budget, $1,000 difference. So, everything seems to be trending that way when we go down through here. And running about $119,000 above last year. So, as you can tell, that things are starting, are running right, the budget increases we had were stuff that we were running right in the same percentages we were last year. Article Three, we're running about $6,000 below budget and we're running about $1,000 difference from last year. So, that looks great, too. Article Four, we're running about $5,000 below budget and we're running about $52,000 above last year, just timing of invoices and stuff like that. So, I'm not, I don't have any concerns there. Article Five, we're running about $44,000 below budget and we're running about $41,000 less than last year. That's mostly due to timing of invoices also. That one kind of has a difference in depending on whether it's a software or whether we're purchasing supplies, that can change from year to year slightly due to, that has IT and curriculum, which are a little bit volatile of what we actually purchase. Article Six, we're running right at, right at budget. We're running different of $2,000 and we're running about $36,000 above last year. So, we're running right under budget. And Article Seven, we're running $37,000 below budget, but we're running right at $3,000 below last year. So, we're running true to last year. Article Eight, we're running right at, right below budget by about $26,000. We're running quite a bit above last year, mostly due to timing of invoices. So, I was looking that, and last year was the abnormal year because I looked to make sure the prior year ran close to what we're running this year. So, I felt comfortable with that. And then Article Nine, we're running about $112,000 below budget and we're running about $62,000 below last year. And that could be just timing of things, what we purchased. I think we purchased something right at the beginning of last year that would make that go up. And so, when we get on to the next one, here's your debt payment that we didn't have last year. So, that's why we are over budget. And so, that is that whole piece. And so, Article Eleven, we're running about $10,000 below budget and we're running about $7,000 below last year. That's timing mostly of some equipment that PAC bought last year, right at the beginning of the year, and he hasn't spent that money yet this year. And then Delta Education is running right about $3,000 below budget and $5,000 above, $5,000 above last year. So, they're running true to form for their budget also. So, that is the financials.
Perfect. Thanks so much. Perfect.
I would like to approve the September 2025 financials as presented.
Perfect. All in favor? Thank you. Perfect. Thank you so much for your time and effort. All right, there's no old business and moving on to resignations and retirements.
Okay, three resignations to announce. Jennifer Martin, special ed resource room teacher, Carl J. Lamb, back at the beginning of October. Timothy Dayton, kitchen personnel at Sanford Middle School. And then John Peppin, plumbing instructor at SRTC. We have advertised for that position. If anyone knows someone who might be a plumbing teacher candidate, please direct them our way. Staff appointments, few appointments to announce. Rachel Jones-Carlson, the CAC FP project manager for the school nutrition program after school at the high school. Vasilika Panakis, kitchen personnel at the high school. Kiriana Exanis, study hall monitor at the high school. And Elizabeth Leroux, ed tech three for resource room at Sanford Pride Elementary. I have a number of Schedule B, Schedule C, and Schedule D appointments to announce. That would be everything with our winter coaches coming up at Sanford High School and Sanford Middle School. It's also listing some other advisors for both middle school and high school and SRTC. And then we also have a lot of building teacher leaders throughout the district. We have a number of people on the certification committee as well. And department chairs, as we go back and make that move through both the middle school and the high school and teacher leaders. I can, we have over almost three pages there.
I think we're okay skipping the names and just moving on to staff transfers.
Okay. And then staff transfers have a number there to announce. Tom McGregor, second shift custodian at the middle school, moving over to the second shift at the high school. Nicole Cotrano, kitchen personnel from five and a half hours a day to 5.75. We have a number of kitchen personnel that bumped up their time at the middle school by .25 hours. That was to adjust through their lunch, the change in the lunches, to be able to do that through grade level. So, that would be Carol Finn, Heather Gagny, Joelle Landry, Deb Selfridge, and Carol Ann Silva. Another transfer to announce, Blaine Moran, moving from the part-time event manager to the full-time event manager. That was the school committee approved back in October. And then Christopher Stone, second shift custodian at the middle school, moving over to second shift at Sanford Pride. Do have a couple of nominations that I will announce and need to take action on this evening. The first one, happy to announce that we have a health occupations teacher, second one, at Sanford Regional Technical Center, Kelly Romagnoe. And then also happy to announce that Eric Benham has returned back to gifted and talented teacher back for our elementary schools as a rehire. So, I would, recommendation is to accept those two nominated professional staff as presented.
I make a motion to accept the nomination, professional staff as presented.
All in favor? Perfect. Thank you. All right, moving on to policies and procedures, just when you don't think it could get more exciting. Hello, Mr. V. Welcome back.
Okay, we have a number of policies and procedures for you this evening. These, the following policies will be for a first read. Policy EBCB, emergency evacuation drills. The only change to this policy is expanding the grade span to include pre-K. Policy EBCC, which is bomb threats. This policy has one minor change in terminology, changing the term PET, which was a people evaluation team, to IEP, which is individual education plan team in accordance with state law. Next one is emergency closings, E BCE. Policy E BCE has been updated to clarify the authority and procedure for school closings and cancellations. The revised policy. and cancellations. Um, the revised policy, um, specifies a decision to close schools should be made by no later than 6:00 AM, and establishes that all after-school and evening activities will be canceled unless the superintendent, um, gives the authority. And it outlines , uh, communication methods, um, in which we, um, communicate, um, closings to parents. Policy K, which is student memorials, um, has been updated to include guidance for a student athlete, coach, or individual with a significant connection to athletic team passes away. Um, it says that school may observe a silence before one home game during the current season coordinated by the athletic director in consultation with the family. Um, and this is to maintain uniformity in school athletics. Um, sorry. New sentence. To maintain uniformity in school athletics, no permanent alteration to school uniforms are permitted, and that any fundraising requests, um, betting a nonprofit organization, um, is chosen with family input and is subject to athletic director's approval, um, with that. Policy EBD, EBBD, um, temperature standard for school. This comes out from a new law that was enacted, um, last legislative session in June. Um, and it sets, um, temperature standards in our classrooms and what we should do if our classroom gets too cold or too hot, um, with that. And so those policies are there for you for first reading.
I'll make a motion to accept the first reading of policies EBCB, EBCC, E BCE, K, and EBBD as presented.
I second those.
Any discussion or we all in favor? All in favor? Perfect.
Yes.
Uh, the following policies and procedures will be presented for a second reading. Policy JKAA, use of physical restraint and seclusion and the accompanying procedure JKAA dash R. Um, this policy and procedure have been updated to reflect recent changes in main law that redefine serious physical injury to include situations requiring evaluation or treatment by a school nurse and removes a voluntary requirement from the definition of a physical escort. These changes provide school staff with clear guidance for when physical interventions may be used while maintaining the safety of all students. Policy EBAA, which is chemical hazards. The updated policy includes language stating that the school will allow, will follow OSHA standards for chemical safety and adds requirements for science laboratory chemicals and institu, including establishing a chemical hygiene officer role. We have these things. We just did not have them in policy. Policy EBBA, policy and notification of injury and first aid. The updated policy has been updated to include specific language for employee accidents and other main, minor language changes. And the last one is policy IHBGA, which is homeschooling participation in school programs. This policy has been updated to clarify participation in graduation-related events. The graduation ceremony, senior week activities, and project graduation are reserved for students receiving a Sanford High School diploma. Homeschool students are not eligible to participate in these events, and I recommend, um, these to you for a second reading.
I make a motion to accept the second reading of policy JKAA, EBAA, EBBA, IHGBA, and procedure JKAA dash R. I second that.
No, I don't think so. That, that was the second one. Or are we moving on to that?
Yep.
Yeah, that's right. I apologize for, we're talking even. Uh, so, yeah, well, there's three sections. Okay. So is there a second? Oh, well, perfect. All in favor?
And I have two policies recommended for deletion tonight. Policy EBC, which is emergencies. Policy EBC was adopted in 1993. The information in this policy has been incorporated into the comprehensive health and emergency safety plan. It is no longer needed. And the second one is an updated form, which is a procedure EBCB dash E. Um, this, uh, fire drill reporting form is obsolete and no longer, uh, needed. Um, we now have an updated electronic form that we use that is part of our comprehensive emergency health and safety plan. So those two are no longer needed.
So I'm going to make a motion to delete policy EBC and EBCB dash E, but I have a question. I'll second that. Yeah. So are these found in the first reading things or they're, they're in something different currently?
We had already approved that, comprehensive health and safety plan.
Okay, that, yeah, when you said that-
It's just when, as we were going through Section E, these popped up later on. We've already approved the comprehensive health and safety plan, so.
Okay. That was it?
Yep.
Okay. We ready to vote? Perfect. All in favor of deleting these? Perfect. All right. Thank you, Mr. V. So items for future agendas. I feel like we had some. Yep, Paula?
So I would like for us to review the disciplinary policies regarding, um, vandalism and behavior, specifically when, um, students come in front of the school committee.
Do you want that to go through the policy committee? Or do you want that to, uh, have that be a, um, school committee agenda item?
A school committee agenda item.
So you want to see what policies we currently have in place for vandalism and, um, student behavior?
Yes.
Okay.
I would agree with both of us as well. Um, and I did just want to say it's probably not the thing, or actually, I can skip that to calendar announcements, but we're still on the items for future agendas. I know that I've brought it up before, but I just wanted to just have us talk about it, um, again. I don't know if we've had any more information from the conference about the Woodward, the Woodfords, um, and the ed tech training for the BHPs, I think. There was discussion that we had talked about. We learned some more information about that at the conference about maybe a way of just sort of billing, um, and getting our ed techs trained at Woodfords and then being able to, for those that, um, need those services in their IEPs. So I just want us to talk about that at a future agenda. Um, no rush for that, but, because I don't think the training's until the summer anyway, but I just wanted to talk about it a little bit more.
Yeah, and I think along with that, one of the takeaways we had was, um, Cheryl and I plan to be reaching out to RSU 54, the Skowhegan District, to be able to talk with their business administrator.
Okay.
I think that initial call will help us. We're also going to have Stacy Bissell join us for that, is the plan, so that we can be able to look at their district and our district in terms of, uh, they were the ones who were presenting at that conference that got our attention to say this may be something for us to look into and pursue. So that's our, a plan for a first step, is to be able to, uh, reach out to them, uh, kind of like in a conference call, Zoom call.
Perfect. Thanks. Anything else or future agendas? No?
Well, that, um, just that TV series that, I know that, yep, just something fun.
Yeah, no, that was, we were, we were hoping to do that tonight, but with a long agenda, that it got pushed off to a future meeting. Yep.
Um, and then moving on to calendar announcements, I will just add one thing. The high school, um, is doing a big Thanksgiving food drive between freshman, sophomore, junior, and senior classes. Um, there's minimal food right now compared to many other years, so I just want to do a shout out for that. Um, it's a competition. I believe the middle school is doing one, I think, maybe not, but definitely the high school. So, thank you.
Calendar announcements, uh, coming up, uh, next week, uh, there'll be no school on Wednesday, the 26th, as we get ready for Thanksgiving on the 27th, uh, and, um, the day after Thanksgiving on the 28th. Next safety committee meeting will be December 1st at 3:15 at Central Office. Our next regular school committee business meeting will be in two weeks at December 1st, 6 o'clock. And the next Sanford School Legacy Foundation meeting is December 3rd. And just want to give, um, probably should have done this in my report earlier, but want to give kudos to the Sanford High School Theater Company for their presentation of, uh, our town this past weekend. Uh, they had a student performance Friday afternoon for our students, high school students, and then performance is Friday night, Saturday night, and Sunday afternoon. I was able to check out the Sunday afternoon, and it's always so, so impressed with, uh, the skills and talents of our, um, students and both onstage and, and offstage in terms of putting the production together. So kudos to them.
I want to just piggyback on that. It wasn't, it wasn't singing and flashy, but it would, they did a fantastic job, and I was just blown away by, um, you know, the improv, just, just the play altogether. But, yeah, so that, I'll just jump on that. That's good.
All right. Although, is there anybody else would like to stay longer? Are we ready to adjourn, adjourn this meeting? All right. Motion to adjourn at eight, okay. I put 8:21, so we'll go with that.
I second Lisa's.
All right. All in favor?
Lisa, maybe we'll-
We all second it.
We all second it.
Thank you so much, everybody for watching. Come back.